This is Granbury City Council Regular Meeting. It is 6:00 PM Tuesday, November the 7th, 2023. We are at Granbury City Hall, 116 West Wood Street in Granbury, Texas, 76048. For tonight's invocation, I'd like to invite Pastor Terry Lubin, chaplain of our Hood County Sheriff's Office, to please give the invocation. Stand.
Heavenly gracious Father, Lord, Creator of all things and the giver of life and blessing, Lord, we pray to you tonight and ask for your presence. You've promised to never leave us nor forsake us, so, Lord, we pray for your Holy Spirit to hover over this room and over all who are here. For those that you have chosen and put in positions of decision-making and authority, Lord, I pray for your wisdom for them and the knowledge to use it. I pray, Lord, that your love would permeate this room and it would be peaceful. Lord, I pray for our servicemen and women who stand in the gap for this country and for all of us. I pray for our first responders, who instead of running away, they run into harm, they run into danger. Lord, I pray that you build a hedge of protection around them and that you keep them safe. Lord, in all things, we acknowledge you. You are the giver of all things, and we thank you most for your Son, Jesus Christ, who is our Lord and Savior and died for us. Lord, this prayer and all prayers tonight are lifted up to you in your name. Amen.
Amen. If you'll please join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the heat, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. And thank you for all you do. Yes, we'll just keep coming around like this. I'm gonna get in the middle here, okay? Thank you. Thank you. All right. I'm gonna stand here in the middle, all right?
Okay. We're having a proclamation tonight, and it is concerning home care and hospice. And all of you who have experienced, the home care workers and hospice workers know how important this is during that very trying moment of time in your and your loved ones' lives. So let me read through this. Whereas, home care and hospice services provide high-quality and compassionate health care services to those in need, especially during times of community or personal health care crisis, allowing families to remain together in their homes for a greater length of time, as well as provide better care, dignity, and comfort in their community. And whereas thousands of everyday heroes such as home care and hospice nurses, therapists, and aides provide compassionate professional health and palliative care to millions of Americans in need. And whereas these professionals and volunteers provide fundamental support within the health care provided to our elderly, infirm, and disabled population. And whereas anyone in health care, home health, and hospice, the National Association for Home Care and Hospice, and thousands of agencies across the nation have declared the month of November as National Home Care and Hospice Month, we are asking all Americans to observe these occasions with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Now, therefore, be it reside that our General Mayor of the City of Granbury do hereby proclaim November 23 as National Home Care and Hospice Month in Granbury, Texas, and encourage the support and participation of all community members in learning more about home care and hospice services to better care for our neighbors and aides the quality of life in our community. And we're excited to... And who do I present this to today? This is who I do right here.
Okay. Missy, thank you. Do you have a word or two? That's what we call a mic drop.
We're gonna move right to 4.2, City Council, City Manager issuing encouraging statements and recognizing city staff. Mr. Kaufman?
Well, I would like to thank the staff for appreciating the week of me not being here last week. I know they benefited much more than I did. I actually took a vacation and didn't have to worry about things and knew that they were in good hands, even in spite of the network outage and the rebuilding of that. You know, people have been working crazy, like with two hands tied behind their back, and we're still getting the job delivered. So hats off to staff, and we are making progress on the recovery from the cyber event. And I believe we're almost caught up on the October billing cycle thanks to the finance, the entire finance team, not just the billing team, but the entire finance team. And we've also had to restaff some positions through this, which has made it even more difficult. So, staff, keep up the great work. Thank you for all that you do for us. We live in a beautiful community, and y'all really helped make it that way. Just like this morning, they were power washing the... No, it was yesterday morning, they were power washing the sidewalks on the square, things that go on, the street sweeper that goes on. I bet the county folks don't even know we sweep the parking lot at the courthouse when we do the street sweeping. We are just so excited to keep our place clean and spick and span for our guests and our citizens as they visit all over town. We'd like to keep it clean, so thank y'all. We do, right now, we're experiencing a slight emergency, an oversized vehicle. We were successful in removing some power poles today and caused a large outage throughout the city, and we've got some temporarily fixed going on. We've reached out to Tri-County to help us. We try to get it restored as quickly as possible back to normal where it's not a patch job. So those guys are out working right now, and of course, our police are working with that and keeping this place safe for everybody. And we've had a busy week already, and it's just Tuesday. So thank you all, team. You do a great job for the city. Can't say enough.
Yeah, I agree.
Counsel? Mr. Rodley?
Yeah, two things. One, the outage, it hit my building. We were down, had no power for about 40 minutes. I had four exams left, you know, eye exams left, and they got the power back on. I was able to get all that done and get here on time, so I appreciate the staff jumping on that, because, you know, we... My office manager's like, "You wanted me to send patients home?" And I said, "Well, I don't know yet." And I called Mr. Kaufman, and he said they were on it and they'd get it fixed as quick as they could, so appreciate that. Yesterday, I spent about, I don't know, hour, hour and a half at the airport with Pat Stewart, our airport director. And, you know, we see all the plans that come up here, and I've been out there before and, you know, seeing where things are going, but to see what's happening out there now and all the things that have happened since we put that runway in with the plans for hangers, the terminal buildings being built, there's so much going on out there. I just... He kept saying, "And we're gonna do this over here," and I'm like, "Okay." It just gets better and better and better. And this company's gonna move this hill to make even room for more hangers over here. And almost all this that's gonna happen doesn't involve city money, and it's gonna do nothing but bring income to us in the form of rent for the property that the people rent for the hangers, and also the fuel sales are just really, really good. I feel like the airport, and that was actually approved before I was on council, but I feel like that airport's gonna be one of the biggest things that ever happens to the city. So I appreciate Pat for showing me around yesterday.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to echo what Chris Kaufman and Councilman Bruce Wadley said is, I think it was an hour before the power was turned back on at my house, and I didn't even anticipate it to be that... To be on for another, I don't know, three or four hours after that. But for them to turn it back on, at least for the residential part of it, in an hour, that's awesome. I just want to say kudos to those teams that are going out there and especially with the... We've had some issues with the, or staffing with the electrical department, and I just want to say thank you to that department and everybody that's involved in helping to restore the power to some of the, or most of the city residents. Thank you.
Mr. Gorgon?
Mr. Vale?
Mr. Mayor, I want to recognize the Parks Department tonight. I think as most of you have seen, as you go around town, we've got a... All the holiday decorations are going up for Christmas, and I think those all get lit up right after Thanksgiving, so it takes a long time to put all those up. As you go around town, around the holidays, you'll see what I mean. And also, the Parks Department will have Memorial Day, all spotless, for the Veterans Day Ceremony that happens this coming Saturday at 11:00 AM. And then just finally, don't forget, we've got a Veterans Day Event at the high school on Friday morning at 9:30. Hope to see you all there. And Aaron, just a great job by you and your team, so thank you.
I can only agree with everything you've said. It's outstanding. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks to the staff. It does, you know, I don't go to any other meetings where everyone is not just really jealous of me because of the staff, so thank you. Thank you all. Let's move right along to public comments, and these are public comments on agenda items, non-public hearing agenda items we will speak to when we get to that item. I have no... Okay. I have no one who's signed up for the public items, so we're gonna move directly to the consent agenda. And first of all, I want to go ahead and, at the request of staff and the providers here, I want to pull 6.3, and we will deliberate on that agenda item after we return from the executive session. So we'll pull 6.3 at this point in time. Are there any other items that council has looked that they would like to pull and have further discussion? I hear no one requesting that, so do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with item 6.3 pulled off.
Mr. Vale makes the motion.
I second that.
Mr. Wadley seconds the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear six ayes. Consent agenda is passed. That puts us moving to Agenda Item 7.1. It's a busy week. Okay. This will be a public hearing, and we'll call that public hearing after staff presentation, but we will consider adopting Ordinance Number 23-82 concerning a request of Tyron Development Corporation to amend the future land use map contained within the 2016 Comprehensive Plan on a 15.147-acre tract of the Midland County School Land Survey, Abstract Number 348, from retail office to low-density residential. The property is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Nitty Backus Road and Loop 567. Mr. Kaufman?
Sure. You may recall this item on the agenda where we rezoned it at our last meeting. We failed to change the future land use map on that same agenda, so it's just a matter of housekeeping tonight to go ahead and change the comprehensive plan to meet the zoning change that we made previously. Kira, do you want to add anything to that? Okay. If y'all have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Council have questions? Anyone have questions?
I just want to make a comment, Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Just want to bring to the attention to the City Council that if we continue to do these amendments to the future land use map and also the zoning requirements, we're gonna be losing a lot of businesses, frontage on Loop 567, if we continue to do residential along 567. The whole purpose of the loop of 567 is to have a business, or commercial businesses in the front facing the loop and then residential behind that. So I just urge the council, when it comes to future land use, we did Summerlin, which is across the street from that. We did away with the commercial on the Summerlin project, and now we're doing another project across the street from Summerlin to put more residential instead of having commercial frontages, frontage businesses. And I understand that you have to work with tech stock, but that's something that we have to do as a city and just keep our future land use the way we spent money on. I mean, we spent money on this 2016, and we're gonna spend money again on another comprehensive plan here pretty soon, and if we continue to change it, it's gonna... We're losing valuable base tax, commercial property for Loop 567. So I urge the council to reconsider in future projects on 567 to look at these and make sure that we continue to use commercial property frontage or keep that as commercial property frontage when it comes to these projects.
Okay. Other council members in conversation speak? Okay. No further discussion? Do I hear a motion? Yes, I need to open the public hearing. Does anyone want to speak on this? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 23-82 as defined in the agenda here at 7.1?
So moved.
Ms. Burwell makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Gorgon makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Nay.
It passes five and one. Thank you, council. Next one is also a public hearing. We will consider adopting Ordinance Number 23-83 concerning a request of Granbury 491 LLC to amend the planned development heavy commercial district adopted ordinance number 20-01. The property is addressed as 1380 East Highway 377. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Y'all may remember this is the old Kroger store that's been redeveloped, and it's specifically the area where the car wash used to sit. I'll turn it over to our Planning Director, Kira Wowie, to fill you in on the details and walk you through the presentation.
Thank you. This is our location map. It looks a little different due to our technology we're coming along with this, but the site is outlined in yellow. That's the subject property that is proposing to amend the zoning. The total area of the existing PD is outlined in the teal, and the purpose of the application, the applicant wants to build a drive-through restaurant. The PD assigns to that particular parcel retail use, and there was some history on that during the development of the PD. There was talk about having a drive-through restaurant here, so just kind of think of this as a cleanup a little bit. But the property is very narrow and long, and that drives a need for amended standards, like your setbacks, and there's a one tree that just can't fit onto the site for the parking lot requirements, although there will be a good number of trees and other landscaping on the site. So that's a real high-level summary of what they want to do, and I'll take you through the slides real quick here. So this is comprehensive plan, retail office, it fits. Pretty much run over the zone change for you already. This is the site plan. What you can see here, the brown box is the location of the drive-through restaurant. It's a coffee shop, if you will, and the dashed lines running to the right on the drawing, or that arrow, to the right is 377, and towards the top part of that site plan is Harbor Lakes Drive. The blue square is where their parking will be. They don't need much parking, and that is adequate. And the green square over there towards the left is where their dumpster will be. All those red arrows represent where the drives are. There'll be cross-access to the adjacent parcel to the west and also direct access under Harbor Lakes. It's a landscape plan. It's a little bit hard to read, but basically, any location on the property that is not a building or drivable car vehicle area, it's gonna be landscaped in some fashion. This is the elevations as proposed. There are, one, two, three, five standards that will be proposed as changes to the existing. And again, that's due to the long shape and very narrow parcel. We satisfied the notice requirements, mailing notices, as well as in the newspaper, and we received nothing in response to those notices. And these are your considerations. We find that the changes would be beneficial to the community. These are contained in your staff report. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval with the conditions that were attached in the ordinance exhibit, and staff is recommending the same approval. These are your voting options, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have questions? Ms. Wowie? No questions. I'll open the public meeting. Is there anyone that would like to speak? I see no one, so I'm gonna close the public meeting. Counsel, do I hear a motion to approve, to adopt the Ordinance Number 23-83 as described in Agenda Item 7.2? Mr. Gorgon makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Vale makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Nay? I hear no nays. It passes six and oh. Thank you. Okay. Number 7.3, a public hearing, consider adopting ordinance number 23-84, which is the request of Glenn Kruger for a specific use permit for a bed and breakfast hosted. The property is addressed as 321 Doyle Street. Mr. Kaufman?
These next two items are BBS, and I'll turn it over to Kira Wowie again. Thank you, Kira.
Thank you. So the location map outlined in teal is the property on West Doyle Street. The proposal in this particular case is for a bed and breakfast. It's been there for many years, and this is a renewal. They're proposing four bedrooms. Site has adequate parking. This is the zoning, and you can see there, they go back to 2014 with their SUPs. At one point, they had five bedrooms. They're serving four bedrooms now, and they've been through this several times. We're recommending five-year term on the SUP. No known concerns expressed in the area for this particular item. Buffer maps, this is the 600-foot distance buffer map with the site there in the center. So the pink shows the other short-term rentals, bed and breakfast types. This is the site plan. Shows the home, the parking, a bit of the grounds. And the floor plan, this shows the four bedrooms. It's required by our ordinance. The specific use permit has review criteria, and these criteria speak to the parking, which is satisfied that the use will be compatible with the neighborhood. They've been there for a long time and have demonstrated compatibility. These are your planning and zoning commission recommended conformance with other findings in the zoning ordinance, and our public notice was sent as required in the mail and published in the newspaper. We haven't received anything in response in either favor or in opposition. Planning and zoning recommended approval with these conditions that are shown on your screen, including a five-year term and conformance to site plan and floor plan and the other standard conditions, including a maximum of four bedrooms. Staff recommends the same, and these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Counsel, other questions? Comments? No? Then I'm gonna open the public hearing. Does anyone have, anyone comments to make on this? I see no one raising their hand, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 23-84-84, the request of Glenn Kruger for a specific use permit for a bed and breakfast hosted, as outlined in Agenda Item 7.3? Ms. Burwell?
So moved.
Makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Wadley makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no one opposed. It passes six and oh. Ms. Wowie, do you want to go ahead? Well, let me read this first. We're gonna consider adopting ordinance number 23-85 concerning a request of Four Shelby Property, Four Shelby, Inc., for a specific use permit for a short-term rental residential unhosted. The property is addressed as 522 Mill Street. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. So this is your location map, as usual. The site is outlined in teal. It's on that corner at Hannaford in West Mill Street. This is the first time for a short-term rental on this property, and the proposal is unhosted with three bedrooms. This is the zoning. It is in the historic compatibility overlay district, which is acceptable. Sites should, are required to be in historic areas. This is the 600-foot buffer, so the pink squares are outlines, show the nearby short-term rentals. This is the site plan. There would be a parking space provided along Mill and then also parking to the Hannaford site, side of the property. And the floor plan separate from the site plan shows the bedrooms that are proposed. These are the specific use permit criteria. We find that the criteria are met, including the parking, the number of bedrooms, and so on. And we see this regularly, they're pretty standard. And these are the criteria about whether the use will fit into the surrounding area. Since this is a first-time use on this site, staff is recommending the standard one-year term to afford for performance. We did send public notice through the mail, as well as publish in the newspaper. We received nothing from anyone in favor nor in opposition of the proposal. Staff, P and Z recommended approval with these conditions for a one-year term, subject to the exhibit, B and C, the site plan and floor plan, and the limitations as shown on your screen. Staff had the same recommendation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Then I will open the public hearing. See anyone? No one is raising their hand, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Counsel, do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 23-85 concerning a request of Four Shelby, Inc., for a specific use permit for a short-term rental residential unhosted? Mr. Wadley?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. It passes six and oh. Number 7.5, to consider authorizing the City Manager to execute an agreement between Texas EMS, Inc. and the City of Granbury to provide optional enrollments in their membership program to utility customers of the City of Granbury. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Mayor, counsel, I did have a meeting with EMS Director, the wonderful EMS Director, Ricky Reeves, and asked him to come tonight to do kind of two things. We want to talk about this agreement and the project that we currently have, so let me tell you a little bit about it. If you... If you subscribe to Granbury Utilities, you have an opportunity to opt-in for a dollar at this time to receive, basically prepaid ambulance service in excess of what your insurance would pay. So they're needing to increase that fee. It's been the same fee since this project began in 2012, and they're looking at going to $3 ultimately. That way, we'd be on par with the same premium that other non-water utility people are paying in the county for this service. So they've proposed to go up to $2 in January, and then the following January, make it $3. It is a voluntary program. We have about 2,500, if I'm just off the cuff here, 2,500 subscribers that currently donate the dollar a month. We're going to notify all the utility customers if you approve this agreement. We're going to notify all the utility customers with, inside their bill, with a document that says the rates are changing to these, and if you would like to opt out, please let us know. We will remove it from your bill. If somebody even calls in January and says, "I don't want to do this," we will stop the program for them. So Ricky, I asked Ricky if he might want to come and speak and talk about the level of service and how busy you are and how much things have grown through the years. You know, as our community has grown, even since the census, by about 1,500 residents, we see the growth. We understand the traffic on the highway and congestion, and that is also affecting our other utilities. These people are moving here. They don't bring water, sewer, trash, ambulance service, police service, anything with them. We have to meet those needs. So tell us a little bit from your perspective how things are going and what's cooking at the EMS.
So thank you, Mayor and Counsel, and Chris, for inviting me here. Texas EMS, used to be Granbury Hood County EMS, still is. It was formed in 2001. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so we don't receive subsidies from the hospital, city, or county. We operate basically off of what we get revenue from transports. In the beginning, we run three trucks. We are up to four. We're trying to put a fifth one on. The call volume is rising about 6.5% a year. We cover all of Hood County except Pecan, and we mutilate in the Pecan plantation. So we cover a vast area from two stations. One is over on South Clifton. That's the station we own. The other one is at Commercial Lane, which was the beginning station. And we do that till nine o'clock at night, try to get on that side of town for short response times. We are proposing with the counties some three additional stations that they're looking to use ARPA funds to fund, so we're trying to expand. One will go into Harbor, one will go out Acton, one will go out somewhere on the loop. So we're trying to expand, try to get quicker response time for the community, because driving down 377 without the construction, it's a nightmare. So we're trying to anticipate getting ahead of the growth and ahead of the construction by trying to do these stations. We have 30 employees, are full-time. We have about a 4.1 million budget that we go every year, so it's a pretty large operation. Again, our growth is just astronomical. As you know, in the last 10 years, the 60 and older age population has grown about 45%, and that's predominantly a lot of our call volume. So we are growing, just like the community. We anticipate when the sewer plant comes online and the moratorium's lifted and more building comes into play, the schools being built, we're going to see a lot more growth. And that's going to create a problem for us and impact, so we're trying to get ahead of that. So again, we're 501(c)(3). We're trying to do this without subsidies, and so that's a major undertaking for us. We've been extremely successful. There are about 750 EMS organizations in the state of Texas, and we're less than a handful that operate with this model. So it's phenomenal we were able to do it for 22 and a half years. And as things change and things go forward, we'll be looking at other ways to try to subsidize our revenue, to continue to expand and continue to grow. So we have a total of eight ambulances we can staff if we need to, but we staff for during the day. So I'll entertain any questions about our service if I didn't cover something.
Counsel, questions for Mr. Reeves?
Just a comment.
Mr. Bell?
We just appreciate the service that you guys provide. I hope I don't need to lay down on the back of one of those anytime soon, but you know, I think the service that you guys provide and the cost in which you give people the opportunity to pay and even the increase, I think that's probably the best insurance that you can buy. So we thank you for all that you do, for all the citizens here in Hood County.
Thank you. And one thing that's included with that agreement is we do a site plan with Air Evac for air medical. So Texas EMS pays for every citizen in the community to have the same type of membership with an air program. So it covers you anywhere in Hood County for any of the residents that live here as well.
And I can tell you, working out of the airport for almost eight years, we service that helicopter, you know, from the airport to make sure that, you know, they hit the ground, we fuel them up, they keep running, and off they go. And they, again, they do a great job, and you know, I don't want to ride in a helicopter again unless I'm standing up or sitting up, but it's just, it's a great service to our community, so thank you.
One thing I did leave out, so when I talk about the growth, we run about little over 9,000 calls a year. That's a tremendous amount. We transport about 6,000. I retired from Louisville Fire Department, and we had 120,000 population, and we only run about 6,000 calls. So for this community, as small as it is, we have a high volume for EMS calls.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Reeves, we certainly appreciate your pre-planning and your forecasting what we are going to be needing in the future and getting ahead of it as much as we can. Thank you so much. Appreciate.
We thank the Counsel's support and your support, sir.
Mayor, this agreement is drafted for you in your packet, and it mirrors the previous agreement, except for the terms of the compensation, that they'll be voluntarily donated to the city. We voluntarily administer that and send it to them at no charge on a monthly basis. And again, the proposed fee is to go to $2 in January of 2024 and $3 in January of 2025. Keep in mind that we're going to push this media out to let people know what they're volunteering. Previously, goes from a dollar to $2, and if they don't want to participate, they can let us know, and we can stop that immediately. To do it the other way would be very labor-intensive in the midst of what we're trying to do already. I think it would be better to just let it roll, and if somebody doesn't want to do that, you know, we sent out all the publication and noticed that the increase is happening. If they want to opt out, then we certainly allow that. But if we were to just say, okay, it all stops now and everybody sign up again, the labor involved with that in the midst of catching up with the cyber event would be ridiculous. So we recommend the path that we've put out is just give notice. If somebody calls us in January and says, "I didn't see your notice. I see it on my bill. I don't want it." We will subtract it, and we will take them out of the system. And it seems like a more efficient way of doing it. So that's what we're proposing to you tonight. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, questions? Mr. Kaufman? Mr. Reeves? No questions? Yes, Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, I just want to bring to the attention, just, this is for every bill that's in the city. Is that correct, Chris?
It's for any utility customer that we have can participate in this program, whether they have all services or just part services.
So for, as an example, if Stephen, Councilman Bell, has five houses that are under his name in the city limits, and he gets those electric or city utility bills, then each one of those bills, he would get...
No, you would only sign up for your residence.
Okay.
So it doesn't affect, you can't pay for somebody else's in another home.
Okay.
They got to have an account here to be able to get that discount or to prepaid. You can go directly to Texas EMS and buy it for $36 a year.
Okay.
Or you can do it through the city system next year for $24, and then the next year, it goes to $36.
Gotcha.
With a monthly fee instead of the one-time fee that they would charge you. So it's not designed to be automatically put on there. The ones that have it have requested it at the dollar rate. So we don't just add it on there without talking to them when they sign up for service.
Right.
We ask them if they want it. If they don't want it, it's not on their bill. It's just like the Parkland Dedication Fund. That's a voluntary donation as well, and people can call and stop that at any time as well. Or they can increase it if they want to give more than what's being on their bill, so. Does that make sense?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? No? Do I hear a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement between Texas EMS, Inc., and the City of Granbury to provide optional enrollments in their membership program to utility customers of the City of Granbury?
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan makes a motion?
Second.
Ms. Burwell seconds. No more discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. It passes six and oh. This next one still on?
Yes.
Okay. Can move now to 7.6. There is also a public hearing on this one. We will consider approving a request of Harbor Lakes Golf Club for the approval of an onsite sewage facility for the property located at 512 Mustang Trail, which is located within the city limits and CCN. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn this agenda item over to the Public Works Director, Chester Nolan. This is a permit for a septic system to be installed out at the Harbor Lakes Golf Course.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This particular item is on the agenda because the sewer line has collapsed at this location. It services the number five hole on Harbor Lakes, the restroom facilities there, and also the maintenance barn. This would allow the facilities to be, continue to be used. Currently, they are closed, and recommend the approval and move forward with it.
Counsel?
Questions?
Questions? Okay. There are no questions? Do I hear a motion to approve a request of Harbor Lakes Golf Club for the approval of an onsite sewage facility for the property located at 512 Mustang Trail, which is located within the city limits and CCN? And I did not call for a public hearing, I'm reminded. So is there a public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to speak publicly? I see no one. So I'm going to close the public hearing. And then, now do I hear a motion to approve a request of Harbor Lakes Golf Club for the approval of an onsite sewage facility for the property located at 512 Mustang Trail, which is located within the city limits and CCN? Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Burwell makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Vail seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. It passes six and oh.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I just received a report from the electric distribution guys, and they have one pole set, and they're moving to the location of the second one. They're still working there. They'll be out there for probably several more hours, because they have, also have a transformer bank that they'll have to install, but we do have the help on-site now, and so they're moving forward with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all you do. And it's not, it doesn't go unnoticed that the relationship that you have with Tri-County and with the other people that help you out there has a very, very good relationship. Thank you. Thank you for maintaining that. We appreciate it. Okay, now, I'm going to move to number, Agenda Item number eight. We have citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes for a combined total of 30 minutes allotted at this time for comments regarding matters not listed on the agenda. We are allowed to receive input or information for future agenda items. We'll not be allowed to enter into any discussions. I have two people who have signed up tonight. I have Ms. Stacy Rist. If you'd go ahead and come to the podium and give us your name and address here.
Hi there. I'm Stacy Rist. My husband and I own property at 3101 Old Granbury Road. Together with my parents, we own approximately 12 acres at 2708 East Highway 377 and 3101 Old Granbury Road. This property is our livelihood. It is our investment. It is our retirement. If the east wastewater plant is built, our investment in retirement that we have been working on for 51 years will be greatly diminished. We will continue to fight this battle to protect our investment as long as it takes. Our pastors told us, when this first started, one of our pastors told us, "Just keep taking the next wise step." And I assure you, we will continue to take each next wise step. If any of you would be willing to give my parents, my husband, or myself half or more of your retirement accounts or your investments, then you can tune me out for the rest of this conversation, and we'll get in touch later for those trade information. I've sat through many public meetings in the last three years. One was on May 24, 2022, and it was regarding impact fees. I think they were shocked when we showed up to see this meeting, but that's what, those are the kinds of meetings you need to go to. This is from a May 24 PowerPoint concerning impact fees. Impact fees are the payments that developers make to pay for the services that are going to be coming in to the developments they are building. It covers the cost to bring the infrastructure to the edge of new development, and it's to mitigate rate impacts from the people that already live there. On this page right here, that was presented on a PowerPoint from the 2019 Impact Fee Process Capital Improvement Plan, 2019. I didn't know about the sewer plant until late 2019, and we didn't start fighting until 2020. There is a north wastewater treatment plant that's supposed to be, I don't know if it's supposed to be completed or started in 2023 at the cost of $15,746, $746,420. There's a plan for you that you didn't take, and during that same meeting on the screen was a wastewater and wastewater capital improvement plan dated November 2018. You spent money on this, just like the future land map that you keep ignoring. But, right here, it says, as 2018, as the wastewater is nearing capacity, two main lift stations are also near capacity. They are, to release stress from the collection system, we're going to build two new strategically-placed treatment facilities. Right here, the goal in 2018, construct the new east wastewater treatment plant. Number four, construct the new north wastewater treatment plant. The north wastewater treatment plant is intended to be constructed to eliminate forced main crossing the main body of Lake Granbury that is currently conveying flow from the main LS lift station. This will eliminate a major lake crossing and provide future capacity for the north portion of the system. Figure five shows the service areas. The map that shows these is from 2018. The north one is where the new police station is. It has been a plan that has not been implemented since 2018. Your price of this east sewer plant has gone up, and you blame the opposition? No. Blame the plan you had that you failed to implement. That is your fault, not ours. You had another plan.
Thank you, Ms. Rist. Next one that's asked to speak is Mr. Tony Mobley.
Through?
Five. Chelsea Bay Court. First of all, thank you for saying my name right. It's been said wrong a lot from that dais. I appreciate you saying it right this time. Hey, it's been a rough week in this county. Who knew that City Hall would be one of the calmest places when you look at the police blotter and the power lines going down in the city? So hey, I just came in here to see some friends and kind of relax. Want to thank the Counsel for standing firm on this issue that was just brought up and ignoring some of the critics and the cynics and those opposing, maintaining our quality of life. Thank you for knowing the issues with the infrastructure, addressing them, finding a solution, the best solution, and sticking with it. Thank you for allowing citizens like me to come up here and talk. Even those that don't live in the city, you allow them the time to come up here and speak. Even if they come up here for three years, every month for three years in a row... Even if they come up here for three years, every month for three years in a row and say the same thing, and yet we still do it. Impact fees, trust me, I wrote a big check about two months to the city. I understand impact fees, but I also understand, sitting on that side of the dais, what the costs are if you don't address them. So thank you for doing that, even though when I was up there and voted on it, knowing if I ever did anything like I'm doing right now, it was going to cost me money, but it's Lastly, shame on you, those who run for office, talking about transparency, lowering taxes, and stopping growth, and that's your platform. You come into office with no alternative plan, and you just say no. Then you find out how the real world works up there. $13 million turns into $34 million, and that's okay because we're going to lower taxes. And I don't know, I'm in finance. I don't know a whole lot about math. I don't know how that math works at all. In closing, I'd like to say, you're welcome, because I'm only going to speak for two minutes. I'm not going to use my whole three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mobley. I have no other individuals that have signed up to speak, so we're going to move into number nine. We will be moving into executive session. So I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, that all members are present. City Council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. 55107-1, consultation with attorney on pending or contemplated litigation. Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property. And section 551.074, personnel matters, city attorney. And section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, Bambino 3. We are now into executive session. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. We're going to open back up with item number 6.3, and this is to consider authorizing the city manager to execute a commercial lease and shell producer agreement, a commercial lease and shell producer agreement between the city of Granbury and Granbury Theater Company. Counsel in the discussion? Further discussion? Do I hear a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the commercial lease between shell producer agreement between the city of Granbury and Granbury Theater Company?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley moves?
Second.
Mr. Vale seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no opposition. It passes 6-0. Is there any other business? Anyone?
Mayor?
Oh, Ms. Burwell?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city staff to advertise for a public hearing for the consideration, creation, and designation of a reinvestment zone.
And I'll second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Burwell, seconded by Mr. Vale. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That motion passes 6-0. Is there other business?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the legal services contract with the Sorrel Law Firm, PLLC, and to extend said agreement through December 31st, 2025.
I second that.
And Mr. Wadley seconds that discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That passes 6-0. Ms. Burwell?
Yes, sir. Done.
There's no more? Anyone else? Mayor? Mr. Rodriguez?
Just like to make a comment. I just want to say, Trish, we appreciate your service, selfless service to the city council, and we wish you the best in your endeavors, and you're going to be greatly missed by the staff and by the city and by the city council.
We're all going to say that, but if you think this is your last, no. We are going to celebrate all of the services you provided, and we are going to miss you very, very much. Did you, did you want to say anything like, you know, Jim, maybe?
No.
No? Oh, okay.
Trish said thanks, but he would.
Yeah, yeah. I know, I've heard no so many times. Any other business? Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, we need to establish the date for the canvassing. Have you got a recommendation, Carla? Is it the 15th? Is that what we talked about? 15th through the 20th is when we need to have a special meeting to canvass the election. So let's set a date now while we're all together. And we can do it during the day. We just need a quorum of four. We don't have to have everybody here. I mean, all we're doing is looking at the numbers provided to a certified by the election administrator and agreeing with it and voting to pass the resolution that acknowledges that and puts it in the record. So don't feel bad if you can't come, and we could do it during the day, or we could do it in the evening, whatever your preference is.
I'm going to be good for all those days.
Is anybody available on the 15th? How many 15th?
I can't do the 15th.
Nope. So we got one that can do the 15th, one that can't. How about your side?
I could, oh, my side?
That side of the council, Steven?
I can do the 15th. I can make that work.
I can do the 15th.
After noon, like after 12.
Okay, so you can do the 15th. Okay, how about?
You can't do it, Greg?
Okay.
16.
How about the 16th?
16th? No.
A lot of us have lunch on 16.
Yeah.
16 at 5:00 or 5:30 or 6:00?
We could do it in the evening.
What about the 16th at 6:00?
Well, Trish.
I think there's an event.
There's the county Thanksgiving on the 16th during lunchtime.
Yeah.
So I think we all got invited, our majority of us.
I'm judging dessert.
I'm judging dessert.
What about Friday the 17th?
How about Friday the 17th?
I can do that. How about 1:00? Noon?
Michael will be here for me. I can do, I can do all these dates, so.
What's wrong with the 15th at lunch?
17.
Can't do it on the 15th? We can't, we can't have 100% on the 15th, can't have 100% on the 16th.
We're not going to 100% on either.
I'm not going to be here on the 17th.
I don't think I'm going to be on the 17th.
Okay, so it's either the 15th or 16th, and all we need is four people.
And I want to be here because I've got a special recognition I need to do, so.
What about the 15th at noon or 1:00?
Or the 18th even.
You can't do the 15th.
Saturday.
Well.
I'll be out of town.
15th?
On what day?
15th at 1:00.
1:00?
You'll be out of town?
On the Saturday.
No, the only one we're missing is Greg on that day.
The 15th.
On the 15th.
I can't do the 15th.
Oh, you can't?
I cannot do the 15th.
And you can't do the 16th?
But if y'all four can do the 15th, that's fine.
No, I can do the 16th after, anytime after 12.
16th work for y'all?
I can do the 16th.
Except for road ring.
I can do the 16th.
Well, we don't have to do it during lunch.
How about 2:00?
2:00 on the 16th?
I'll be working, but I could come at 1:00.
1:00?
I could do 1:00.
16th at 1:00.
Will we be done by then?
We can be. We'll just have to leave early.
Leave early?
I'm a judge for dessert. Yeah, you'll be done.
Oh, you're not going to be, you're not going to road ring.
The 16th during the day?
You'll be done.
Judging food?
You'll be done. Okay.